So I'll call to order the city council for the city of Dunsmere at 6:05 PM on September 3rd, 2020, and we'll move into the flag salute. So Councilmember Kaiser, would you like to lead us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. When I move on to roll call. I'm sorry, Councilmember Kaiser, what was that?
I said, "Thank you, Madam Mayor."
Oh, thank you. All right, Wendy, do you want to take over a roll call? Let me see if I can find you. Yeah, you're unmuted. Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Brian.
Present.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
And Mayor Lukasey.
Present, thank you. So we do not have any special presentations tonight, so we'll move into item number four, which is general public comment. This is time for members of the public to address an issue that is not on the agenda or is on consent agenda, item seven, which is listed below, which is a check register and a council memo. Each speaker will be given three minutes to make their statement or may present their questions in the chat function. I do have a letter to read for public comments, so I'm going to read that first to give people a chance to raise their hands and queue up for general public comment. So give me one second. I'm gonna run a timer. All right. So this is from Karen Roberts, who is over on Cave Avenue in the city of Dunsmere. She writes, "It has come to my attention that you might not be aware of the problems we are having in Shasta Retreat with the amount of hikers that are coming through the area to walk to Mossbury Falls. As you know, parking used to be an issue and the Sheriff's Department is doing a great job of deterring the parking in the retreat." However, that does not eliminate the number of people that are going falls. Over the summer, there, hi Dave. Just a sec. Are you guys still there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. You never, okay, great. I'll start off at that, that second paragraph. So, "Over the summer, there were hundreds of people daily that walked to the falls. I have seen for myself that there was no social distancing during the peak times of the day. There were so many people there, was no way they could be separated in that small area. People were coming with ice chests, pool toys, sand buckets, and strollers as if they're going to the beach. So the question is, where do these people go to the bathroom? Where do they put their garbage at the falls? Well, they use the bushes as bathrooms and some use bushes as their garbage cans at the falls, but many people, as they come back through the retreat, use the retreat as their garbage cans and people's yards as bathrooms. Just a few weeks ago, a car parked by the bridge right next to the no parking sign. A resident walked down to tell him he could not park there and the owner of the car was peeing in the front yard of one of the cabins. When asked what he was doing, he said he had to go and there were no facilities. This is not an isolated incident. This happens daily. In the last weeks or so, there was someone living under the bridge and there's evidence by items he left, books, clothing, and garbage. The garbage was also strung down the river on a shoreline with used toilet paper, which was disgusting. The residents are good about taking bags and cleaning up what they see along the roadways and paths when they are out walking. However, we should not have to do this. We also make periodic trips to the falls to clean up on the way and around the falls. This is very unsanitary and unhealthy situation. I do not know what the resolution is. My cousin has already altered you to the problem and she forwarded the response to me from Bill Williams." So this address, this, so this addresses his, this address his comments in his letter. "The amount of trash that he picked up the day he went is typical of every day. There is no trash receptacle anywhere in the retreat for the public to use, so people just drop it as they go along the road. If there was a garbage can by the tracks before the bridge, then city could pick up on Mondays when our garbage day. However, it would have to be a bear can, otherwise the bears will be in it and it will be all over the road and tracks. That would be one solution for the garbage issue. Now I will address the graffiti. The reason Bill didn't see any graffiti is because this summer, one of the residents finally took gray paint and painted over it as it was on the bridge. A year ago, someone went down on the, into the river and painted a huge "I love..." dot, 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 all over two big rocks on the river. Once again, one of the residents had to go scrub it off the graffiti spray that had, that they had to purchase themselves. It was a huge undertaking and took them hours to remove it as best as they could. At this point, everything that we have brought to your attention is getting worse." And that's three minutes. What I will do is, if council members, if you haven't gotten this letter, I will forward it to, from you from Karen, because it does continue for about another page.
I've read it and I have it.
Okay. All right, so now we'll go back to our participant list. Are there any other participants who would like to give comments during general public comment? Again, if you're having trouble, up here we go. All right. So, Dina?
Oh, yes, that's me.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Dina Marlat and I have a concern that I want to share with the city council tonight. The council, this council here, you recently voted three to two to pass a general sales tax increase and for, because of 218 rules, Proposition 218, this, this tax increase, it has to go to the voters. And, and I looked some things up and per the FPPC, the city may not expend any resources to advocate for or against a ballot measure, even if they are the ones who sent it to the ballot. But the Elections Code permits the council body or what, whoever designated that is, to submit an official argument for or against the ballot measure to the sample ballot. But beyond that, the city, and by extension, the city council, you can't advocate for or against the ballot measure, or expend any resources to advocate for or against a ballot measure. And the reason why this concerns me is because a couple of nights ago, Bruce Deutsch came to a chamber board meeting where I'm a member and he said the council, the proposed sales tax voted by the council was adopted unanimously, five to zero, by the city council, and that, they, meaning the full council, authorized him to encourage the, the chamber's endorsement of the tax. And so I asked Mr. Deutsch if he was there on behalf of the council and he responded that he was indeed there in his official capacity as a council member, and he was indeed there representing the city council in an effort to influence our chamber board to endorse the tax increase. So I just wanted to caution the council that authorizing a council member to advocate for or against this Measure H to civic groups like the chamber, that could be a violation of the law. And that's my concern I would like to bring. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other general public comments for tonight? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close. Item number four, general public comment. I don't see anything else. Okay. And we'll move on to item number five, which is staff and member comments. And actually, I'm gonna start with Ben this week because he was unable to address us last week. So Ben, do you want to give an update today from the sheriff's office?
Yes. Can everybody? You hear me okay?
You're going out a little bit.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll, I'll continue with the report. If I end up cutting out, please let me know.
Go ahead.
So, okay, so for, I'm gonna be reporting on the July statistics. I didn't get a chance to do it last council meeting because I was having problems with the internet, but, and I will be prepared to report on the August statistics next, next council meeting. But for the month of July, we had a total of 530 patrol hours down here. We took 201 calls for service, pulled 26 case numbers, did 37 traffic-related stops, 16 citations, had 11 arrests. Three of those were felony bookings and 16, there was also 16 misdemeanor bookings out of that. Some of the details, the arrests, we had a felony warrant arrest and misdemeanor arrest for possession of drug paraphernalia and for possession of .4 grams of heroin on Sacramento Avenue. We had a misdemeanor arrest and a misdemeanor arrest for possession of drug paraphernalia and a usable amount of heroin and 1.1 grams of methamphetamine on Dunsmere Avenue. We had a misdemeanor arrest for public intoxication at Talendale Park, misdemeanor arrest for public intoxication on Sacramento Avenue. We had a felony commercial burglary that we investigated and made arrest on at Penny's Diner. We had a felony assault on Siskiyou Avenue, misdemeanor arrest for assaulting a firefighter, possession of a usable amount of methamphetamine and possession of drug paraphernalia on Dunsmere Avenue, had a misdemeanor domestic violence and damaging a device used to call for help on Gillis, two misdemeanor arrests for possession of drug paraphernalia on Gleves and a misdemeanor public intoxication arrest on Sheer. Some of the calls for service, we did have three burglaries in July, two were on Siskiyou Avenue and one on Dunsmere Avenue. I believe these were, two of those were, we had port thefts, one on Florence Loop, one on Chastity Avenue, one on Butterfly and one on Gillis. This was the month we had all the auto thefts. It was one on Castle, one on Stagecoach and one on River, and had two assault and batteries, one on Dunsmere Avenue, one on Butterfly Avenue, one domestic disturb on Gillis, one vandalism on Sacramento. We did 10 school checks and had 17 disturbing the peace calls. A more current event that happened is a couple of weeks ago, we had an arrest where we recovered about a fist-sized ball of methamphetamine. The same guy had brandished a firearm at about four people and we, when we arrested him, he had a loaded firearm on him. I don't, I'm not sure if that made a press release or not, but that's the most current notable event that's happened in Dunsmere. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Ben? Councilmember Art, go ahead.
Well, just, the report was fairly replete with crimes involving meth, heroin, what anyone would consider hard drugs. On a general basis, are those apprehended locals or from out of the area?
You still there, Ben?
I'm sorry, what was that?
So the question, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Art.
Well, you're doing fine. You noticed, you noticed a number of arrests and potential law violations around illegal meth and heroin. And for someone who's lived here 12 years and when I moved up, this was a big, big problem in Dunsmere, but the problem seemed to be local rather than arresting people up and down the I-5 corridor. For the activities you were reporting in July, are these Siskiyou County residents or out of county by and large?
Well, I can say that every month, we have local arrests that are related to methamphetamine for local, people that live in Dunsmere. There was a spike in the number of drug-related arrests in July. Some of these were for people that were out of the area. The one that we had where we, where we got that fist-sized ball of methamphetamine, that was a local guy. But it's every month we're, we're making arrests for methamphetamine that are usually among the local crowd.
Is it at the same level of activity or is it rising?
I think that Dunsmere, there was a noticeable spike. I don't, I don't, overall, I don't consider it rising. We usually have probably one to two methamphetamine-related arrests. The thing that we did see more of than usual in July was the number of people that had heroin. But heroin is on a comeback. I do expect to see more of it. It wasn't a huge amount of it. It's usually just a usable amount, but heroin is on the comeback.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, do you have any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kaisler.
I just have to say that it was one of my friends that got that gun pulled on him and we called Ben and Ben stepped to it and within a matter of hours, they had that crazy guy locked up. So I thank you, Ben. You guys, you and your guys did a great, outstanding job in making my neighborhood safe. And I appreciate that. I just wanted to thank you publicly.
Well, thank, I thank you. I appreciate you letting us know. I mean, he, it was, it was an arrest that definitely needed to be made, especially with, you know, he pointed a gun at four people, but he had a lot of methamphetamine on him too. So we needed to get that guy into custody.
Yeah, drugs and guns make me nervous. That's why we called you. Thank you, Ben.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you so much, Ben. I don't see any other questions. So I'm gonna move us on to City Manager Yu Haas.
Sure. So it was announced earlier this morning that the state is extending the COVID-19 hardship declaration in that there will be no more evictions for rent or non-payment, rent non-payment until February 1st of 2021, and partial rent payments after that. Just wanted to pass that along and let you know that the FAA grant is in and that we have a date for starting construction up at the airport as of September 21st, trying to get that by the end of October. And we have a bid opening tomorrow for the water projects, for the USDA water projects.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions, councilmembers, for City Manager Yu Haas?
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you very much. I'll move on to city council members. So I'll start with City Councilmember Art. Do you have any comments for tonight?
Well, I did, I only copied the city manager on my response to the Roberts letter, but I did compliment the author on a well-written letter. And my suggestion was twofold. One, to make sure the city forwards her letter to the Union Pacific Railroad Company because they are part of this problem. The other is, for all of us that are hopeful that the Mossbury Trail actually gets completed in 2021, next year, I think we have to come up with cooperative solutions so that the Shasta Retreat neighborhood doesn't bear the total impact of everybody in the world wanting to hike the Mossbury Trail under conditions that the letter, I take no issue with her description of the trash, the lack of porta-potties, the lack of social distancing. I think we need to start rehearsing as to how to manage that area once the trail is built. The second is, I have talked with a number of citizens that used to participate regularly in city council meetings, and they think, Madam Mayor, that the three-minute restriction is unduly restrictive on public comment because typically less than 10 members of our community participate in these Zoom meetings, and the request is to somewhat liberalize the speaking time for anybody that's willing to participate in a city council Zoom meeting. And I support that. You know, it's not a hard and fast rule. It's a means to balance the need for the public to speak with the time to run the meeting, but particularly for agendas like these that are light, I think we ought to be doing everything we can to encourage public participation. My last item is, I do hope that the city, by resolution or some similar means, expresses our thanks to Sheriff Lopey for his service. If you need a laboring order to write a resolution honoring him, I would be happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and on the topic of Sheriff Lopey, I know his last day, I believe, is the 18th, and we do have a meeting on the 17th. So we were gonna see if that timeline would work. We just had such a short turnaround time between last week's meeting and this one. But if you'd like to put together a resolution, I think that would be more than appreciated. I know the other thing we're working on is also getting a key and awarding that as well. So I'm open to any other suggestions council members or members of the public have and can feel free to email me and we can work on that for the next meeting. So thank you. All right, councilmembers, do you have any questions for Councilmember Art? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to comments. Councilmember Kaisler?
Yes, I, I want to echo Mr. Art's sentiments about Sheriff Lopey. I will admit that in all the years that I've been doing this, that man's always had my back and the city's back. He will be missed and I, I would concur that, that we have a, I spoke with the man today and he was really, you could feel, you could hear it in his voice when he said, "Man, I really could have missed Dunsmere." But in the next step, he's like, "It's time for me to spend time with my family." The man has earned that. So I hope that we do do something for that man, a key, proclamation, resolution, whatever we gotta do, he's earned it. And on the same, same footnote, we're passing the baton to Carl Hauptman and that, I truly believe that we're gonna be okay. He's a good guy. He's got Dunsmere at heart. I read in the paper today about the man. He's been through the trenches. He's a true warrior. And, uh, we're gonna miss Sheriff Lopey, but I have confidence in Carl Hauptman. And on the other note, I just wanted to say that I wanted to congratulate our Citizens of the Year and our Citizen of the Year and our Alexander Dunsmere of the Year. They got sung to at their house last night, which I think that was pretty good of the, of the committee. Um, let's see. Looking at my notes here, looking at my notes. I do miss the meeting. I hope that we can get back to having meetings in person here pretty soon. And I wanted to thank Stephen Bryant for putting together the care team thing last night, the disaster preparedness thing. I heard it was a very good and successful event. I have something going on with my footwork. I can hardly walk, so I was unable to attend, but I was glad to hear that it was successful. And I was also glad to hear that a lot of the Rotarians, my fellow Rotarians, participated. So on that note, I want to thank you, thank him, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Excuse me. Councilmember Brian, do you have any comments for tonight?
I do. I guess I'd just like to take this moment to thank staff and recognize how far we've come on the code enforcement front. It takes an enormous amount of work to, to roll out a program of equal application of the law. And I know there's a lot of growing pains on the citizen's side. I myself experience it. Everyone has to conform for the common good to our code. And Dunsmere's already, I believe, seen the benefits of that. We have cleaner streets, more orderly, more orderly organization when it comes to, say, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Driving through South Dunsmere, which is not part of the city, I've noticed that a lot of the old vehicles that used to be parked in Dunsmere have been towed down there and dumped. And I don't propose that we should leave the South Dunsmere behind on that front, but it's proof that, you know, we're going to be firm and stand up for the common values that the citizens of Dunsmere share. I'd just like to encourage all of our citizens to have patience. You know, it's not as if you're receiving a ticket because you're being picked on. I believe we are diligent in issuing warnings and I commend staff for that. And this is kind of a growing pains issue that we'll be going through probably for the next year. But that, be patient. This is really for all of our, our common good, and I think we're beginning to reap the benefits of this code enforcement program already.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Deutsch? Oops, sorry. Councilmember Kaisler, do you, go ahead.
Comment on Mr. Bryant's. I, I like what he has to say, however, I just let the record know because a lot of people tune in the first part of the meeting and they don't hang around. So for those of you that are tuned in the first part of the meeting, I will be later on in the night, bringing to the council to put on the agenda, to put a code ordinance review committee together to look at and revise some of these ordinances. Some of these ordinances are ridiculous, in my opinion. I am not gonna put a car cover on my car in my front yard, but, 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 but we'll get into that later on. I just let everybody know. Stick around, folks. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Yes, ma'am, thanks. I do feel the need to kind of clarify on the comment that was made by Ms. Marlot. I can see that both she and Leslie have left, so they're not gonna hear this. Excuse me, but for the record, as the official liaison to the chamber, I was at the chamber meeting two nights ago, and on the chamber agenda, at the request of Vice Mayor Bryant, was a discussion of the chamber looking at the sales tax. And as I have been for the last five years, I'm recognized by the chamber as a unofficial, non-voting member. And so when they came to ask me for a briefing on that, I started to talk and all of a sudden I was interrupted by Ms. Marlot and went on for two or three minutes where she tried to stop me from being able to talk. She was told by the board that she was in the wrong and was told she should apologize to me. The bottom line is, all I did was let the board know that there is a budget, that they are available to look at that, and that they, as a board, can make their own decisions on whether or not they want to support it. So that was the totality of it. And as far as my understanding of it is, that I did not make any expenses for the city. It was on a Zoom, and I did not propose that somebody vote one way or another for anything. And it was in my official capacity of being a conduit of information between the city council and the chamber. So with that in mind, that is what happened. As far as the Sheriff Lopey, I do want to add my sincere appreciation for the work that he's done and from my standpoint, both as a sheriff and also as a Colonel in the retired service. And he's been helping us and he was there throughout the putting in of the flagpole and the monument, and I salute him. That's all, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. And I'll just conclude my comments with, I apologize, I was going to send out a pre-agenda schedule. This last week's been, gotten away from me a little bit. It's been rough, to say the least. So I will be getting that pre-agenda meeting scheduled to the other council members, so we can start doing that again to make sure agendas are more clear and well set up. Other than that, I've just been working on the per capita grant application for the Prop 68, which we'll talk about later in this meeting. And I did receive the, excuse me, the 2020 Annual, or sorry, not LAFCO, but League of California Cities Resolution Packet. So I'll be taking a look at that resolution packet and bringing it to the council at our, a future meeting, our next meeting, most likely to just discuss and put in our formal position so that I can communicate back to the League of California Cities at our annual meeting. So that's what I have been up to for the week. And are there any other questions or comments before we move on to item number six? All right, seeing none, we'll move into item number six, which is committee reports. I believe there was a finance committee, or I can't remember if you guys had one earlier this week or not.
We did not have one this week.
Okay, thank you. And I do know that the Disaster Planning Advisory Committee did end up rescheduling their meeting for a different date. I do not have that in front of me at the moment, but let me see. Are there any other committee reports while I move forward with the DPAC meeting?
I, I have a off-the-wall committee report. It has nothing to do with our assigned committees, but there was a meeting with the 1727 train people. Just to let everybody know, we're moving forward and it's all looking good. We have the funds. That train's gonna look pretty here very shortly, so keep your eyes open. We have the funds. That train's gonna look pretty here very shortly, so keep your eyes open, folks.
That's wonderful. All right, and just to get back to it. Yeah, it's very great. Congratulations. Thank you, Wendy. I just found it too. The DPAC meeting was rescheduled to September 24th at 6:00 PM. If members of the public or members of the council would like to attend on their own behalf, they may do so. Other than that, I'll move us from item number six to item number seven, which is approval of the minutes. And on the table, we have city council regular meeting minutes for August 27, 2020. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Councilmember Arth?
Two items. One is, I did ask respectfully that our last meeting be held in honor of a resident of Dunsmere that passed away. Her first name is Alleva, A-L-L-E-V-A, last name Graham, G-R-A-H-A-M. And that isn't carried in the minutes. I would ask that it be added.
Okay, and you said you had a second item?
Second item is on page four of our agenda package, item six. And this is Chairman Brian and I reporting on the Finance Committee. Arth, we did take two formal actions, semicolon, airport fund deficit can be moved to general fund. What I was trying to say is the Finance Committee voted to recommend to the full city council that $20,000 in CARE Act funding that is coming to the airport enterprise be moved over to pay down the debt owed to the general fund. That is what I was trying to say.
Okay.
And then toward the end of the comments made by Chairman Brian, there is the word recos, R-E-C-C-O-S. And I'm guessing recos means recommendations, but as much as these are a permanent record of what we've done, if it's recommendations, it should say so. Thank you.
Okay. And Wendy has said that she has noted your three comments, so.
If that's the case, I make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Kaisler, seconded by Councilmember Arth to move forward with the August 27th meeting minutes as amended. Any discussion?
Good catch, Peter.
Yes, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Hi.
Councilmember Brian?
Hi.
Councilmember Kaisler?
Hi.
Councilmember Arth?
Hi.
And myself as an I, motion carries, minutes are approved. We'll move into item number eight, which is our consent agenda. And tonight, we have two items on the consent agenda. First off, the check register for 8/22/2020 through 8/28/2020. And then a council memo regarding Travelers Hotel, which I believe is just some information related to the questions and concerns that were voiced at the last meeting. Just to clarify for members of the public, the council memo is an information-only item. This is no action, so it's just information. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
Seeing that our city planner is gone, I guess I'll just reach out to council, see if there's any questions regarding that memo. Perhaps move it off the consent agenda.
I have none. I'm ready to make a motion.
Councilmember Arth, do you have a question or would you like to move the item B off the consent agenda to discuss?
Well, I, I appreciate the effort by our city planner to respond to what were common issues, both at the planning commission and at our last meeting. And I just gotta say, I wrote down what Councilmember Kaisler said, some ordinances are ridiculous. And on the parking issue, the point of ordinance number 557 is to make sure we have a walkable core in our historic district and.
So just to clarify, Councilmember Arth, we're not in a discussion item? Consent is not a discussion or action related to that. Do you want to take, would you like to take it off into new business to discuss further?
No, I just wondered procedurally where we can rejoin the parking issue for the downtown historic district area.
I will make a note for future agenda items.
Thank you. And maybe it's a planning commission item, they were as concerned as we were.
Yeah, I think typically for procedure, that would be a discussion and staff and member comments and then in future agenda. But I will make a note to bring this up at future agenda at the end of the meeting about next steps and what our options are.
Anyway, thank you, Rico, for the response.
All right, is there any other discussion or questions? I know Councilmember Kaisler is chomping at the bit for a motion to approve. Councilmember Kaisler, would you like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda with both items A and B.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Kaisler, seconded by Councilmember Deutsch. Any other discussion on the matter at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Hi.
Councilmember Brian?
Hi.
Councilmember Kaisler?
Hi.
Councilmember Arth?
Hi.
And myself as an I, motion carries and the consent agenda items A and B have been approved. Thank you. And thank you, Rico Tinsman, for being available and preparing that for us. I think he's already jumped off. But we'll now move into item number nine, which is a public hearing for the second reading for the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Application. City Manager Yu Haas.
Sure. So as we laid out at the last meeting, we're trying to get an application in for 19 and 20 for a maximum of $500,000 in what would be EDBD money, Economic Development Block Grant Fund, either be used for micro enterprise or traditional enterprise and small grants or traditional economic development block grant, small business loans.
Are there any questions from the council members on the second reading? Before we move into the public hearing?
Well, you talked about the greater flexibility from the old program. Maybe it's a little early to go into all the details of it, but I've learned a lot about that since the last meeting. If you could share with us some of the ways in which it's more flexible, we could look forward to.
Yeah. Sure. So with the micro enterprise assistance program and grants, the cap on that program is 500,000. And the cap on the traditional economic development block grant, small business loan is $750,000, which in our case is a moot point because we only qualify for 500,000. Under micro enterprise, it's, it's a little bit more nimble. Obviously, micro enterprise being small, so it is five or fewer folks, full-time employees, including the owner, that would apply for these funds versus, you know, under a traditional small business loan, up to, up to 25 full-time employees. Now, we'll have a need to meet national objectives, in other words, focusing on low, moderate income. But it's easier in terms of micro enterprise, in terms of there isn't the job creation requirements that traditional small business loans has. It's just that the folks that are involved in the business are, are low and moderate income. It doesn't have the requirement that you create X number of jobs for X dollars. It's just that the people that are starting this up are low and moderate income. The micro enterprise has technical assistance. It allows grants in businesses of up to $20,000 and that can include for folks that are thinking about starting a business and they need some tenant improvements, improvements within those buildings. They can use some of that grant money to get them to the point where they can make some improvements within that building and then, then move on, seek additional business assistance.
I do have a procedural clarification really quick. So is this public hearing item the same as the whole business item?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna combine them on the slides because that's just really confusing because I was like, we're moving off of the public hearing. And that just needs to be one item. So I'm just, just for clarification. So for members of the public, item 10A and 9A are the same item. So we'll combine it into 9A. Right, cool. Sorry, continue.
Okay, so, you know, one of the things with traditional small business loans is you've got to continually monthly confirm with the feds and the state that you still have the same number of employees. You haven't lost any, that, you know, you're adhering to all their requirements and it just, it becomes really, you know, it becomes really onerous, frankly, to report on. And the ability to provide loans that are more nimble and focused on smaller businesses as opposed to larger businesses coming into town. And the ability to provide grants, in my opinion, makes more sense, especially in light of COVID.
Thank you. Could you speak, either you or I don't know if Blake's on, as to how the administrative fee works? And what portion perhaps will be reimbursed to the city to help? I mean, we're doing a lot of grant application and the staff is stretched very thin. So if at least the city receives more funds, it helps stabilize on that employment.
Yes, so what, in applying for these funds, what we need to do is submit with grant, a sub-recipient agreement, which would say that the firm is working with us on underwriting and looking at, you know, reporting to the feds in the state. We're able to use administrative funds of up to 17%, but the folks that we are going to be contracting with will not be using that amount of, that full amount of money. And we'll just be on a case-by-case basis and we'll be fully reimbursed for the amount of staff time that is used on this stuff.
Okay, we might not have this set up yet. Where would I see that split up in the future being reported? I, this is probably getting too deep into how that.
Nope, not at all. So the sub-recipient agreement, once our economic development block grant loans come in, that, that same time, the sub-recipient agreement will come from the state and what that is, it's not really the agreement itself. It is an approval for you to sign that sub-recipient agreement with the vendor.
Okay, excellent. And then a side question relating to that is with the coronavirus relief or, you know, the CV1 portion of the CBDG loan, because we're the lead agency and the whole, you know, a lot of organizations applying through us, how does that administrative cost work, et cetera? Imagine we'd receive a less, less of that 17%, but maybe some of it still? Has that been worked out?
So that has the same sub-recipient agreement and it has the same up to 17% administrative costs. But given that it's a relatively small amount of money, we're, we're not gonna use that 17% for admin.
Okay, well, yeah, I don't think we would, but with the full amount, that, that all the the co-applicants, the other towns that are applying with us?
Yeah.
We receive some applying the, the grant to them for being the lead agency on that. I mean, a small, not an administrative fee.
So the administrative fee still applies across the board for each jurisdiction. It's the same amount. And our obligation is 60,000 plus we have 65,000 in programming that isn't coronavirus related. Can roll it into it if awarded the money.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate the clarification.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions from council members for City Manager Yu Haas before we open the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna move and open the public hearing for item 9A, which is the second reading for the 1920 CDPG application, approval of revamp of EDBG program, Economic Development Block Grant Program, to allow micro enterprise, micro enterprise prize loans and grants. I'll open that at 6:49 PM. That's.
That's easy for you to say.
I know. I'm struggling. Are there any members of the public who would like to give public testimony during the public hearing? So many publics in one sentence. All right, again, if you're on the phone and you'd like to participate, you can raise your hand by selecting star nine. All right, I don't see anyone, so I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:50 PM and move us into discussion. Is there any discussion on the item? Councilmember Arth?
Well, I don't mean to be snarky, but do we have a functioning Economic Development Committee at this point?
We do not have an Economic Development Committee that meets, but Councilmember Brian serves as the representative on the CDPG program. So typically with CDPG and Councilmember Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, we only have one member of, of the council who works with city staff to understand the program and serve on that.
Yes, correct. It's actually the loan committee.
But the.
Sorry, just, just a second. Councilmember Kaisler, I'm getting a little bit of feedback from you, but I'm just gonna let Councilmember Brian finish that. If you have a question, I'll call on you after.
Yeah, I was just saying, a point of clarification, we do informally have an Economic Development Committee that meets very infrequently with Councilmen Deutsch and myself on that committee. The loan committee I am on, and there hasn't been a lot of activity on it recently. You know, in the last year, although there has been some, I have been learning the program with our city finance director.
I, I assume nothing, but obviously I'm hopeful that we're successful in getting these funds to stimulate our fragile local economy. But I do think we need to start paying attention. I, I think the Finance Committee has been a success. And in part because we drill down to the numbers and the purpose and we're forward-looking. I do think the city needs to organize itself so that we hear from the chamber, whatever monies we're asking for, we actually have an economic development plan. So instead of just asking for money and not really putting the two together, it makes it more persuasive and actually more organized as to what the city is going to support and not support. So I do hope in the months ahead, we have both an Economic Development Committee and a Loan Committee. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kaisler, did you have any comments on the item?
No, I'll wait.
Okay, are there any other comments on this item? All right, it looks like Councilmember Kaisler, you're the only one with comments right now before anyone wants to move into a, a motion.
Okay, so let's just do an agenda check. Where we stand right now, did we combine 10A with?
10A and 9A are the same item and that's the item we are on right now. So page, yep, page 13 of your packet.
Wendy, this is your fault. I'm going, I'm crazy right now. But anyway, that's between me and Wendy. I have two pages. Okay, so well, I, I I, I'm, I'm gonna retract everything. I don't have any more, any comments now. I just have a I'm just making sure that 9A and 10A are the same, that we're talking about the same thing. This is all the consent agenda, so, okay?
Correct. Yes, correct. All right. So seeing no other discussion, there are two requested motions or suggested motions. One is two.
I'll go and take it.
Go ahead, Councilmember Deutsch.
I move that we adopt resolution 2018, a resolution of the city council of the city of Dunsmere to apply for the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant, NOFA, dated January 21, 2020, by title and name only.
All right, is there a second?
I second it, Madam Mayor, but I'd particularly like to thank our city manager for seeing this one to the. I second it, but I'd particularly like to thank our city manager for seeing this one to the finish line. We've talked about applying for more funds and benefiting from this program more since I've been on council and we finally are on that path.
All right, thank you. So a motion by councilmember Deutsch, second by councilmember Brian. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand? Right, seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Councilmember Deutsch.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Kessler.
Hi.
Councilmember Art.
Hi.
And myself is also an I. Motion carries and resolution 2018 is approved. Do I also hear a motion for the city of Dunsmere's EDBG loan program to move from the traditional business loans to the combination that's been presented?
I thought I heard one right there.
All right, so councilmember, councilmember Kessler, so moved, I'll second it. Is there any discussion on the motion to move our loan system over to the new proposal for the micro enterprise and small grant based?
Question.
Go ahead.
We will have a chance to revisit this before the program is set in stone in terms of what percentage goes to micro enterprise loans versus business development loans. And I mean, I guess I'm just asking, is there flexibility between the two new sorts, the traditional and the micro?
So Yep, so there there isn't. It's either you pick one or the other. They've streamlined it with this year's go around. They've made some requirements easier in terms of reporting, but it's it's either you pick one path or the other.
Okay.
But so it's either the way or the hard way.
Are we picking it tonight is the question right like here now in terms of which direction we go down?
But I would like to add one piece to this is councilman Bryant, you brought up about CDBG funds themselves. And I had made a quick call and actually got ahold of somebody at the state. And in January, we can apply for up to $3 million in traditional CDBG money if we had a need for it and traditionally this, you know, in larger cities, this is to remove blight, to provide bridge loans for folks that want to do low moderate income housing and to get a project to pencil. They typically dip into CDBG money, you know, that's that's granted from the city to make those projects carry, but there are other things that money could be used for. It could be used for public infrastructure projects as long as it meets one of the criteria for the program. So that's something to keep in mind.
Thank you so much. Speaking of infrastructure, we did approve an application for water, did we not, through the EDBG?
CDBG.
The CDBG, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Question.
Yes.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Yes, ma'am. So two questions. One, can we use that for parking?
As as far as like a construction of a parking structure or securing land?
Yeah, exactly.
It would, we'd have to have some nexus between serving the lower population. So that would be a tough one.
Yeah, I guess. How about the house of glass? Is that something that could work into making that come alive?
It wouldn't. Again, it doesn't meet that nexus, but one thing that even under the EDBG loan program and under CDBG, you can't use it for government owned facilities, but you can use it for eligible nonprofits. So there is a potential that we could get approval for funding for the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. So and I've already talked to Stephen Bryant about that possibility.
There's also huge possibilities, not in the immediate future, but if we could get some of that funding for things that may take public funds to bring back online, like the California Theater or some of the other larger empty buildings in town. Potentially that could be a place where we could bring something to the table to a potential partner for that sort of rehab.
It would have to be a nonprofit. And again, it would have to meet one of the national objectives, but you know, we can get creative.
Yeah, anyway, well, I mean, that's for the future, but I would just love to see us continue. I can bring this up at future agenda items. Continue to look into the possibility.
Just councilmember Kessler, I'm going to let councilmember Brian finish and then move to you. So councilmember Brian, if you'd like to conclude.
I just say I'm grateful that we're benefiting from this program and I'd like to have us explore it further.
All right, councilmember Kessler.
Sorry about that, Matthew. I thought you were done. Okay, so a couple of things. One, I want to make sure, we really need to make sure that these funds can be used as you're saying. And if that's the case, well, hell, Dunsmere could start, we could start a trend. Let's, let's let's start something. It's called low income parking. We can't afford to park nowhere. So I'm sorry, I had to throw that in there.
No, you're okay. That's great. All right.
That was great. All right.
All right, thank you. I'm going to move us back to the motion at hand, which is a motion to move the city of Dunsmere's EDBG loan program from the traditional business loans to the combination. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Councilmember Deutsch.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Kessler.
Hi.
Councilmember Art.
Hi.
And myself is an I. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. So we're moving on from item 9A and 10A, which were combined. And we'll move us now into new business. And so our first order of new business is item 11A, which is actually technically old business, which is a resolution encouraging the wearing of face masks. So city manager, you has, take it away.
Yep, so it is really the same as past time. It's, it's, you know, clearly we're in the middle of the pandemic and what we're finding out is there is a limited amount of transmission outdoors, especially if you're keeping your six foot distance. It's really indoors where you're having stagnant air and that aerosol, aerosolization of droplets is hanging in the air longer. So along with CDC guidelines and state guidelines, we're putting this resolution forward strongly encouraging folks to wear masks when appropriate indoors. In various locations.
Todd, just in case somebody, a question, Todd, just in case somebody had not heard our first discussion, would you go over for just for a moment why we decided we couldn't go with a mandatory?
Well, it sets us up for liability in that if we said we're going to enforce it and we then we don't have the manpower to enforce it, then the city could be sued. If somebody gets sick from COVID and says, well, you guys weren't there to to crack down on folks that that won't wear masks indoors.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Art, do you have a question?
Well, it would be useful to make sure we're all on the same page. And most of what I know, I read in the San Francisco Chronicle, but it sounds like the governor of California has shifted this away from phase one, two, three in favor of a color coded regimen county by county. And Siskiyou County is currently orange with the potential of moving up to the least restrictive category depending on the next two weeks. And so my question now is the resolution, the, there's two whereas's that really ground the resolution on a state of emergency. And it may be that the city and the county have moved past the state of emergency into the new normal where we're going to want to encourage people to wear face masks well into the future. So do we have a good fit with grounding the mask encouragement on an emergency rather than a longer term? The way the rest of the resolution reads, it's simply important to keep everybody safe.
So that state of emergency, you know, unless the governor rescinds it will be in effect. And I don't think, you know, I'm tealeaving reading here that the governor would rescind the emergency order, even if we get to the point where we're in the, you know, in the green zone, just because we're still going to be on a heightened level or until we have Max, you know, we have a vaccine rolled out. So you know, they'll be watching very closely to see if we start seeing spikes. And like we did last time, we start, start seeing spikes, we're going to end up going back in the opposite direction. So I think it does fit. And if we need to readjust because you rescind the emergency order, we could definitely can bring it back.
Now, on the flip side, because I strongly believe in social distancing and the masking we're encouraging, what if we have a business or two in Dunsmere that simply thumb their noses at our objectives and what we're trying to do? Are we going to have a complaint line? Are we going to do anything? Or is this simply a kind of a feel good encouragement ordinance?
It's, the ordinance itself is more of a feel good. I think it comes down to a grassroots effort. If we have businesses and I've heard that we do that do not want to you know, to follow this, then I think we certainly can vote with our feet and decide that we are not going to shop at said stores.
Thank you.
The mayor just informed me through chat that she had to move away to an issue in her house. And I'll be taking over for the rest of this item. So are there any more questions?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I got a question.
Yes. Yes.
You know, if I wasn't, if I was just like nobody sitting on the sideline, what I would hear right now would have just like condemned one of my favorite places. One of the stores that have been in existence for like ever. I don't, I don't know how I'm feeling right now. I, I, I kind of think somebody
I think we're still clarifying questions, Big Dave, so it's more about the ordinance right now. But I, I share your struggle with
Okay.
But let's stick with clarifying questions on the actual resolution.
Yeah, thank you.
I have no questions.
I guess my only question is, I mean, it essentially just reaffirms at the local level that we agree with in addition to tolerating the state and federal mandates concerning mask wearing, I mean, essentially, that'd be it.
And we that we support it. But we're not enforcing it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, there is no enforcement, encouragement.
I'm on board with that.
Okay, so you know, is this, I believe we should open this item to public comment at this time. If anyone would like to public comment on face masks in this resolution, you may do so now. Use the raise your hand function found in the participants tab or hit, was it star nine?
Star six.
Star six.
It's a, it's star, it's star nine for raising your hand and then star six for unmuting yourself.
Oh, God.
All right, I don't see any hands up for general public or public comment on the item. And I did not receive any emails unless someone else did requesting to be read.
I think we had the extensive declaration at the last time this came before council.
Correct. So looking, looking at the individuals who are on the call, I don't see any public comments, so we can close the public comment period. And I appreciate you, Vice Mayor, for taking over for a second. I am listening to everything. I just can't be at the keyboard at the moment. So if you guys would like to continue to leave the item and discuss, I will listen, but I have to be away from the computer for a second.
Thank you, Mayor LaCazey. See no public comment. Let's move forward to discussion. Big Day, would you like to continue your thoughts?
Um. Cool. I'm cool.
I'd like to make a motion.
I want to hold my spot a minute. Let me hear everybody else's comments.
Well, Bruce, before we make a motion, is there any other discussion of the item? See none, move forward with your motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move that we adopt resolution number 2020-15, a resolution of the city council of the city of Dunsmere encouraging the use of face coverings in indoor and enclosed public spaces by title and number only.
Okay, good.
All right, that's a motion by councilmember Deutsch. Second was councilmember Kessler, I believe.
Yep.
All right, is there any discussion of the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move forward into a roll call vote.
All right, sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Deutsch.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian. Councilmember Kessler.
Hi.
Councilmember Art.
Hi.
And myself is an I. Motion carries and resolution is passed. Thank you, Vice Mayor Brian, for running through that. I'm probably going to have you just Vice Mayor Brian, I think I'm just going to have you lead the other items and I will continue to listen via my headphones and I will chime in during discussion and vote. So I apologize, just to, yeah, sorry. My husband had knee surgery last week, so we're bouncing around the house right now. So, thank you.
That motion carries. Let's move forward into item B, enforcement of abandoned and distressed buildings ordinance. City manager, would you give us an introduction to this item?
Yeah, so earlier this year, we passed an ordinance for doing what we can to get people registered that have abandoned and distressed properties in the city. Of 32, 33 that are on that. And the idea is they pay $500 for a registration fee. And those individuals work towards either finding a tenant that is fully operational in terms of a business or somebody residing in a residence or working towards selling that building. And we had a vote by council to put off enforcing that until we had the, as councilman Art mentioned, we had a different system when we moved into phase three, when things really start reopening. Because the idea is it's really hard if you force people to to pay a fee to register and you keep ratcheting up the fees when they can't get new businesses in or can't sell particulars because of the conditions surrounding. So it was asked in the last council meeting to see if we want to revisit it this time around.
For clarifying questions, I think I'll take the lead with the simple question. Have we had any further input from our attorney on this matter?
Well, he said that we should be very careful about trying to enforce this at this time because it may be construed as a taking. Especially if you're ratcheting up fees. And again, because of this, the economic conditions, you, you don't have the same opportunity. You don't, you don't have the people that are going to be starting businesses or purchasing properties to start businesses.
Okay, councilman Art, do you have any clarifying questions?
Well, I'm trying to be very careful.
I bet you are.
So there's no perception and I, you know, I want to be absolutely clear that with great fanfare, we adopted this ordinance earlier in the year. We adopted the ordinance because the city of Weed has had tremendous success in moving their buildings from abandoned and falling apart to now being in front of a superior court judge for those who do not wish to repair their buildings or comply with the city's request. But I, you know, there are any But I, you know, there are any number of downtown buildings within and without the historic district that need paint, they need glass, they need the most obvious exterior fixing up. And I don't see why being in the orange zone would discourage the city on an even-handed professional basis with the code enforcement officer the citizens are paying for to start telling these building owners, some of whom, and I'm not talking about any particular building owner. I'll take Napa Auto Parts. Go look at it and see whether we ought to sit and twiddle our thumbs while it sits empty, tagged with wooden shingles all over the top, ready to catch on fire. So I would like to see the city move forward and start enforcing the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Councilman Kaiser, do you have any comments?
Oh, yeah. Peter, I'll buy your beer right now. Dude, I'm so proud of you. That was awesome. I, I, I want to concur with everything Mr. Art said. Okay, so I, I wrote, he was talking and I, I wrote weed court? Question mark. Earlier, early in his conversation, he was saying that this in particular person has the city of Weed.
Point of order, point of order.
Yes.
We should not be talking about a particular case or a particular person. And the second thing is we haven't done public comments, so we should only be in question.
Yes, and this is the report. So it's clarifying questions regarding our.
Mr. Deutsch is absolutely right. You got to go to public comment. And then if you would, I, I, I got a couple of things to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Deutsch, do you have any clarifying questions?
No, sir.
Mayor Lukasey. All right, let's open this up for public comment. Let me see if there, if there are any hands raised now. I see there are none. I'll give it about 10 seconds. Raise your hand or hit star nine to raise your hand. And I'll put you in the queue for public comment on the status of the enforcement of our abandoned and distressed building ordinance.
Again, if there's anybody out there, this is the time to speak up. Sorry, buddy.
And I do not have any chats, so.
Seeing none.
Okay, there you go.
Close public comments and proceed with discussion. Councilman Deutsch?
No, sir. No comments.
Mayor Lukasey?
I do, you know, vacant building ordinances are not something that I am particularly comfortable with. You know, even professionally, I think I understand the desire to fix up the buildings and to hold people accountable, which I'm, I'm okay with for, you know, health and safety. So, you know, rat infestations, you know, severe nuisance cases. I think for me, it starts to get a little bit too draconian if we're going to start sitting here and pointing fingers at people's paint jobs. That's me personally. I think at this point in the junction with people's current uncertainties with their businesses. And again, we're supposed to get another good round of COVID in October, let alone we do have a lot of our hotels are booked up for the Labor Day weekend. You know, I do have some concerns about the economic hardship we'd be placing on people. In my opinion, I would rather see the list of, of properties that we have so far. I would like to see at least some effort put forward to promote them to fill out maybe the new EDBG program for grants and loans to fix up their buildings and make them safer and usable. I would like to see the promotion of that for a couple of months prior to going into the more enforcement side of it. That's my personal opinion on it. So I, so I would vote no for enforcing the abandoned and distressed building ordinance at this point. But I would vote in favor of a program to encourage those individuals to find the financial resources to move forward. And again, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I wanted to just add two points to just for consideration in the discussion. And again, you know, we'll do, obviously we'll do whatever you guys want to do. The, the concern is in this environment, if we start enforcing it the way we all want to do it, it'd be construed as a taking of property if people are unable to get businesses or unable to sell their, their buildings. And the other point is with Weed, and I'm not suggest, it's not the same thing because we aren't focusing on one particular property owner. But in Weed, they're facing a lawsuit because they went specifically after one, one building owner and they're being sued for discrimination.
Thank you, Councilman, City Manager Yuhas.
How do I raise my hand? How do I raise my hand?
Welcome to hear your, your thoughts on the subject and discussion.
I know we're going, you're, we're all talking about one, a lawsuit that we did after one in particular person. We're not trying to isolate one in particular person. But it is this council member's wholehearted. Man, I got faith. I believe that they're going to find this in particular person at fault. I believe that the city of Weed is done right. They've done nothing wrong. Actually, they set a precedence. Now, here we are. We're talking about this. We're not trying to isolate any one in particular person. But we are trying to, man, we got to make our town safe. These are buildings, okay, it's a theater. Whether it's not, whether it's not open or not, it's got to be safe. If I walk by and a piece of tile falls off on my head underneath the, the lighting, you know, who's liable? At this point, the city of Dunsmere is. We've worked without isolating any in particular. There are, there are a few people in the city of Dunsmere that I have personally, me and about nine city managers in my eight years have worked with to try and help this, a few people to get in compliance. We can't make them do nothing. But I'm so mad I can't say what I want to say. I'm just going to have to back them back up because you guys got me can't say names, can't say. Let's just say that I have faith in the city of Weed. I believe that they will, they will win. And, and then at that point, a precedence could be set because we have not one, two, three negligent buildings that are structurally compromised. They are, they are, in my opinion, a danger to my people, my constituents. The people that vote me to put here, so I'm the mouthpiece. Hey, man, I don't want a tile falling on my head. Mrs. Smith don't want a tile falling on her head. You know, and Mrs. Smith don't want to walk down in a building on Sacramento Avenue and all of a sudden, one day, it's going to be, all the glass is going to blow out. There's a lot of things. But again, I'm not, I'm not trying to, man, you guys can start saying I can't say no names. Whole new ballgame. So
Councilman Kaiser, bring it back to.
I've been working with a certain individual for eight years. And for eight years, all I've got is lied to my face. And.
This isn't what this is about, Dave. This isn't what this is about.
Understand your frustration with any property owner that doesn't take the safety of our constituents seriously. And I think we have.
We're talking about properties, not anybody, no in particular.
List that I, Todd, if you give, it's, it's tens, you know, dozens of buildings, not any one particular property owner, et cetera. And they all have similar problems, but we're talking about.
Anybody can step in right now. I need to come up.
No, I'm just saying, I'm sure you have opinions on the enforcement now versus holding off. And that is the item we have.
All right.
Should I define taking? I know that, you know, members of capital understand the concept, but it's the idea that we potentially could be sued if we're ratcheting down with an ordinance and we were in, still in lockdown because of the pandemic. And we can't get, these folks have no opportunity to get businessmen to either start a business or to purchase that property. And we continue to find them until they're out of business. It can be construed that we're taking their property.
Question? So in other words, Mr. City Manager, what you're saying is, is that if we were bad people and we wanted to get a piece of property, we could put this ordinance in place in the middle of a pandemic when nobody's going to buy and we could nefariously take that property. That's what we're worrying about, right?
It could be, it could be construed.
I think.
That's right.
It can be argued that way.
Exactly. Yeah.
The, the full answer to this about whether we would get ourselves in trouble by seeing the abandoned distressed building ordinance is going, would be settled by the courts. And it would likely be on a case-by-case basis because we have a house that burned down in North Dunsmere. And if the city didn't enforce that no one could live there in an uninhabitable place. And we did it during a pandemic, I think it would still hold up in court that we were looking after the public safety and overall community benefit of having safe, clean, if we can, affordable places to live. So I, I kind of wonder, you know, in thinking of the ordinance itself, I kind of have two questions. One would be if it might be possible to separate abandoned versus distressed and maybe increase our enforcement of the distressed side and let the abandoned know that the empty isn't going to be prosecuted right now. But you're on the list and we're waiting for that time where we can work together to bring things in. But on the other hand, I know that the way the process works, they have to have a inspection done. And there's a list of things they need to do to come into compliance with the distressed portion. And city manager has the prerogative to give them a reasonable timeframe for coming into compliance before the fees ratchet up. Part of me wonders if we could get to the point where we, we have these lists, we're doing that work. We know what needs to be done. You know, we're moving the ball forward in that we are processing these properties. In our city manager's calculation of what's a reasonable time period, he can take into account the pandemic and the hardships imposed by that. So I wonder.
That's perfect, Brian. That's perfect, Matthew.
But Todd, what do you? Put together a middle ground program.
So when going after a property like that, it would, would need to be fall into the category of a potential for an imminent fire, a potential for an imminent collapse, a violation of a cross connection ordinance, those kinds of things where it's something about health and safety.
You're on the.
Yeah. So, you know, we can start the process forward. The problem is then we would be doing tea leaf reading of when we're going to be out of this. I think we're, I do think we're very close to a vaccine. And we're talking about November. If we get the announcement that that's in place, I think that would be a prudent time to move forward. We get the next level up from the, the governor and we get the, you know, the green light beyond orange. And then, then I think we can move ahead full steam. But again, it's, again, it's, it's council's call. That's just my recommendation.
So just really quick, Councilmember Art has been patiently waiting with his hand up.
Sorry, Councilman Art.
This is an item where we have no memorandum, we have no recommendations, we have no proposed course of action. All five of us enthusiastically adopted the abandoned and distressed building ordinance. Forever, there's a higher burden on those who own buildings in the historic district. And that ordinance is completely specific. You can't have paper up in your windows. You can't have peeling paint. You can't have facades that are about to fall down. If the council now wants to suspend or repeal the ordinance we just passed, if they want to suspend or repeal the historic district protective ordinance, that's far more straightforward than saying all of a sudden, we're afraid to enforce the laws that we just passed. It's really disingenuous. And I don't see what in the world COVID-19 has to do with you need to paint your building.
Well, taken, Councilman Art. However, the abandoned or empty side of it has a lot to do with the ability to attract a tenant willing, willing and able to pay. So I think that's where the hardship comes into play.
Well, you made the comment that there's some sort of ordinary code enforcement going on. And that's news to me. Show me where it's going on for commercial buildings.
All right, I, I'd like to make a motion to continue the suspension of enforcement of the abandoned and distressed building ordinance to be revisited in two months.
Two months? About two weeks.
There's a motion table, is there a second?
I make a motion revisit in two weeks.
All right. One, once again, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Art? All right.
Julian, I would have seconded you, but it would have been in the face of the storm. So I'm just going to let it go for the two weeks.
Okay, that's fine.
But it's, was it amended to two weeks? I didn't.
Oh, sorry. There was no second to my motion, so my motion fails. Councilmember Kaisler made the motion to revisit at the next meeting, which is in two weeks. And Councilmember Art seconded that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I feel so bad right now. I didn't mean.
Oh, no, you're fine. Oh, no, you're fine, don't worry.
I don't think too much. I think this is something we need to look at now.
So there's a motion on the table. Let's move into discussion. Councilman Deutsch, do you have anything to say in discussion with us?
Oh, sir.
I myself would, would just like to propose perhaps the perspective that it doesn't need to be in two weeks that we revisit this, but that when our city manager has time to come up with a recommendation for how much we could do, given the current ordinance and the discretion perhaps at his disposal to keep us in line.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I made a motion, did it get a second?
It did, and we're discussing it now.
Oh, well, then, end of debate. There was a motion.
Dave, we're discussing.
All right, we, we can do a roll call vote.
That's right.
But is there more?
I'm just, I, I'm going to call the question.
No. No, Matt.
Councilmember Kaiser, a call to question is a vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Kaiser?
I, I, I made a motion.
And how do you vote?
I vote yes, two weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Deutsch?
Yes.
Mayor Lukasey?
No.
Councilman Art?
Yes.
And I myself am a no. The motion carries three, two.
All right, Councilmember Brian, would you like me to take over now that I'm back here at my desk?
If you'd like.
Or would you like to continue?
If not, I could certainly handle the very last one, but go, go with it.
The last, the, the last one's super fun. You can take it.
All right, move forward to item C. All right. Move forward to item C, Children's Park Project. The manager, would you like to update us on this?
Sure. So we have Prop 68 park funding available to us to the tune of 177,000. And as we've mentioned before, we're looking at Children's Park in the location that it's in, I met with a representative from the state and a playground vendor out on site. And so Prop 68 money can be used to purchase property, but it has to, we can't purchase it for more than what that property appraises for. And so we own half of that park right now and the underlying landowner, I don't think there's even a chance that they're going to sell it what the appraisal comes in for. So that leaves us one of two options and that is that we, and we could do this all, fully new ADA accessible, really, really spectacular equipment, demo the area that we own in the vacated street and move the park and still have just about the entire amount of space that we do now with that 177,000. Or, and this is something else I threw out to the underlying property owner is I gave him a list of vacant properties that are about the same size and asked him to take a look at some of those and if they are of equal worth and he wants to make a swap, then we could keep the playground in the same spot, make that swap and then, you know, replace the playground equipment and have, keep it where it is and have brand new equipment that'll last a real long time.
Yeah.
Excuse me, manager. Are there any clarifying questions on that?
Yes, I have one. Todd, the question I'm having, first of all, I thought we, a couple of years ago, made some sort of a change in the boundary line with regards to the old Spruce Street that is there. Did you run into that when you looked into this?
Well, I don't know, you know, when I look at the, the original lease for the children's park, it's, it's a little misleading the way that survey was drawn up or the lease exhibit was drawn up. And it looks like we're renting that children's park from the underlying property owner. And it turns out we own that vacant street as well as more than half of the playground equipment that's out there. So we've been effectively paying rent for a big chunk of property that's ours. So we could take, you know, can basically take what shows on, what on the survey is that, that vacated street and more than half of the playground out there, demo the playground, demo the part of the, of the asphalt, that's that vacated street and just lay out, you know, the playground surface that we need to meet ADA standards, move the basketball court and still have some green space and we just be moving it down by 60 feet south.
I'm raising my hand. Raising my hand.
Councilman Kaiser, do you have a clarifying question?
Yes, um, okay, Todd, it seems that there are two property owners, actually three, I guess, property owners on this said property. We have Mark Orez, who owns a gas station. Mr. Benson owns the roofing that we leased the playground. And then we find out, low and behold, the city of Dunsmere owns Spruce Street. Well, half of the playground's in Spruce Street and half of the parking lot, would that be Mr. Orez? I guess, oh, if everything in the, to the south would be Mr. Orez and everything to the east would be Mr. Benson. Is, is that correct?
Well, I mean, sort of. It's, so what it is, is we've got enough space between Mr. Benson's property that abuts Mr. Hicks' property and the vacated street we owned and the part of the playground that we owned, that we can have a playground and green space that's just about the same size that's out there now that we would own completely.
Todd, I gotta, I gotta go back to what I was saying before. I really, really remember this coming up before the council about three years ago. And it had to do with the split and the allocation, both north and south. So what I would, my concern is that I, I think we should at least go back and find that in the minutes and determine what that was, unless you've already looked at that and determined that that was all a mistake.
I just know that I had a brand new survey done and we own enough property that we could forego any underlying lease and have.
Okay. I'll take your word for it. I just have the sneak and remembering, the sneak and memory.
We do have, look at the parcel of Matt.
Manager? Jack, clarifying question for the city manager.
Yes.
Hey, Todd, yes or no? We all live in Dunsmere and we all know, we all know what we're talking about. But if I am not correct, the gas station that we see that is built, that is like 50/50 on the edge of Dunsmere property. And that's where we're trying to bring our park that much forward. Am I correct?
Um, I'm not understanding the question, but the gist of it is, is that if you look across the street from where the children's park is and you see Spruce Street and you cross over to the other side, that width of Spruce Street is on, on, you know, it's a vacated street is ours and we also own more than half of the playground. What I'm saying is if we demoed the part of Spruce Street that's ours and we moved the playground south, it would be entirely on our property. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
The gas station, is it on our property?
The gas station is not.
It's not?
It's not.
So Councilmember Kaiser, Councilmember Kaiser, if you look at the last page of your packet, page 22, there is a survey showing where the playground is, where our property is that, that we're talking about and that might help with a visual.
It would simply be moving the playground 25 feet to the south.
Almost to the. So we're basically digging up the parking lot, but not the gas station.
Correct.
Parking lot is actually the remnants of Spruce Street.
Okay, so that, that, that's the clarifying question. Not the gas station, just the parking lot. I'm sorry, you give me a piece of paper. I need a microscope to see that writing. I can't, I, last page, yeah, right. I see R S B 24. It's too small. I'm blind. So, um, uh, but just for clarify, it's not the gas station. It's just that parking lot strip that would extend our playground to.
Correct.
And my understanding about this, this item is it's, it's information only. So, um, Councilman Art, do you have any clarifying questions?
Oh, sure.
All right. Mayor Lucchese?
I don't have any questions, but just to add, it is information only. We do have a couple of options with the applicant, the per capita grant application. The big thing is, is this will have to come back for council action once we get an appraisal price and we see what the land may go for. So this will come back to the city council.
Yeah. Do we have any, I have one question, any preliminary information on the, the cost of the different methods? Clearly the appraisal and buying the land would be a whole separate thing, but what it would take to move the playground, would we use up most of our 177,000 or would it barely, you know, would use up half? What do we think that would be?
So what I got from the playground rep is if we were able to buy the land at what we think it will appraise for, say that's $70,000 and we then can keep it where it is and we put in, we purchased that property and we put in new playground equipment, you know, 177,000 will cover that. What I got from the playground rep is his, you know, and again, without doing full workup, is that we might say, actually save a little money by moving it south. I don't think it would be a lot, but we'd save a little bit of money. And that money could be used for a very small park related project or it could be used to make the playground more spectacular.
Okay. Thank you for that, although.
Well, yeah.
The alternative would be we, we'd still have our newfound parking lot that's north of the gas station itself that could be used for other as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there more discussion on this information topic?
We should have a public comment.
Uh, Councilman Deutsch?
We should have a public comment.
For information.
You don't, you don't have to for information only, but I mean, it's, it's not the end of the world if we did.
Well, we'll see how it goes. We haven't had great luck with public comment today. Open items 11 C up for public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please raise your hand on the participants. You'll find it on the right hand side, the raise your hand button.
I don't see anybody. I think you're correct, so.
All right, seeing none, let's move forward into our, sorry. Forward into item 12, consideration of future agenda items.
Okay, hand raised.
So just, just really quick, I'm just going to summarize what I have written down first before we go into anything else. So first off, I have the parking, downtown parking issue here. We do have a couple of ways that we can do that. We could refer the item to planning commission, which would probably be the most productive place for that to start. One of the things we run into is when we do have a lot of planning commission topics being referred to them, we do not have a budget for Rico, Rico's time to work on this at this time. So just to let you know, but we can refer that to them. It may not go to the planning commission right away, but it may, you know, it'll come up when they're available to do that. The other thing that I have is code reviews for outdated codes. Just to let the council members know that I have been working with the city manager to start reviewing the codes along with our code enforcement officer. We do have a couple of code sections that we already know are an issue and will have to be updated. So we are actually working on that in the backend. And then for the next meeting, I have an item for recognizing Sheriff Lopee. I don't believe I have any other items that were mentioned, but go ahead, city manager, you have us.
There's the one item about adding an additional number to the, to the finance committee and it was suggested that, that be discussed further at the finance committee. Is that correct?
I believe so. Just to see what the input would be for that committee.
Okay, we certainly can discuss that.
Yeah. And by the way, I maybe, I may, excuse me, I may be removing my support for that agenda item. So if somebody else wants to stand up with Mr. Art and second it, that'll be fine. But right now I don't have a desire to see that on the agenda.
What, what, what?
Talking about the addition of a new member to the finance committee.
I believe it was, yeah, Councilman Art and Councilman Deutsch that wanted to put it on there. I, I, I think that maybe people want to bring it up for discussion. We could, if you want to hear the finance committee's recommendation, that's fine as well.
I'm fine not visiting this item. I think the finance committee is fine this, the way it is, but we're kind of slowly getting into discussion. So I'd like to just receive it referred to finance committee.
Okay, well, we'll wait for an official recommendation from the council. But if city council doesn't think it's something that needs to be discussed right now, so be it.
I believe Councilmember Art has his hand up.
Yes, Councilman Art.
Well, I, as I said earlier, I do appreciate the memo from city planner Tinsman. And on the list of ordinances that need to be looked at again is the one he cited that says the city's hands are totally tied as far as dealing with parking issues in the historic district. I mean, it makes absolutely no sense. So I hope there's an opportunity when we talk about parking citywide and especially in the historic district, that we not have any self inflicted wounds so we can actually do some planning for the future. My second item is looping back to pre-COVID and the visioning and the questionnaire that the mayor led as an exercise. We have sort of dropped that. We have a two-year budget, but we really have kind of quit on asking the citizens what they'd like to see in the future and coming up with an agreed upon plan with priority, with objectives that fits the budget. So I'm just wondering when we get back to talking to the citizens about what their priorities are. Because I think we owe that to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Any other, I guess, nominations for future agenda items?
I move, we adjourn.
Got my hand up. I'm raising my hand.
Councilman Kaiser?
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, first I'd like to say that I am looking forward to the day when I can watch little Tony play in his wheelchair or his handicap device in our handicapped accessible playground. That makes my heart thinkle thinking about that day.
It's wonderful.
I just wonder.
But we are on future agenda items.
I know that. I just wanted to say, cause that, anyway. On future agendas, I would like to put on a future agenda, I would like to enact a code ordinance review committee to take a look at and revise some of our ordinances.
We just did that, Dave. Cindy, Juliana just talked about that.
Gentlemen, we're not discussing the item. We already did say we want to put revisiting the code on our agenda.
Yeah, I have it, I have it listed as an item. It may take a little bit to get back to us because it takes a bit to get through the code, but it's being done right now and it'll be brought to us in the future.
I would just like to make this apparent to all my council members that we have a code. It says.
We can't talk about the code, Councilman Kaiser.
We're, we're, we are, we are putting hard, financial harshments on people that can't afford it. This is not an issue that could be delayed. We need to take it right away.
Juliana is already doing it. She said that she is already doing it.
Please, please, we can remain civil. We're going to take this seriously, Councilman Kaiser. Would you like to review the wording we have for it? We're going to have code updates on the future agenda. It may not be next meeting, but it will be in the coming meetings.
That's, that's my problem. That, that's my problem. Why can't it be on the next meeting? That's what we do. We talk about things being on a future agenda. I'd like this to be on the next meeting. I have people that can't afford to wait.
Big David, I sympathize with that. The only reason why not would be if staff and/or the volunteers that may be involved, Mayor Lucchese being one example perhaps, who don't necessarily have the time to complete a full and comprehensive recommendation on what we should or shouldn't do with that. So we need that basis. Why don't we work on trying to get it onto the nearest possible meeting?
And Councilman Kaiser, if people are having issues, we do have an appeals process. And I would strongly encourage you to let those people know that they can go to the appeals process and talk to a city staff member.
I really have a problem with our appeals process. I got a problem with the.
Okay, so we.
Discussing the topic right now.
When people are having to pay money, things to get tickets, we need to take a look at this. I mean.
Okay, it is, it is on a future agenda item. And at this point, we're going to move on from item number 12 to item number 13.
All right, the chair will now consider a motion for adjournment.
I move, we adjourn.
There are seconds.
Second. I have a second.
Roll call. All those who say aye.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
All right. Good night. Thank you.